The 12th regular session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. Please rise. Invocation by Honorable Councillor Edgar Cavandlas, followed by the singing of National Anthem and the Kagayan di Oro March. Wala pa's Councillor Cavandlas?
Wala pa'ong kabot.
Wala pa'kabot? Isa may ante ipan? Isa may ante ipan? Invocation. Councillor Gahan, you are requested by Attorney, Councillor Attorney James Judith to lead, to say the invocation. Thank you.
May Hapon ka na tinan. Mayor of course, everybody please make the sign of the cross in the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. Our Father in Heaven, Holy be your name. Your kingdom come, your will be done on earth as it is in heaven.
Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but as we
Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with you. Blessed are you among women, and blessed is the fruit of your womb, Jesus.
Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us, and you send your light.
Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit.
As it was in the beginning, and as it will now, and will ever be.
In the name of Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Okay na?
Mga kababayan, ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang mahibing, kaso sa sila nanan. Alam ng puso sa nikitoy buhay. Upang hininga, wera ng mahibing sa manludupi. Higa pasisi pil. Sa natap, tutup sa sipayat, sa nani ko po raw. Ay yun atap, tutla kaowin sa pagkaya ni damahal. Ang isa't isa, pa kaowin kuwan, ay naran kinihi. Ang ituwi na talaw niya kayna, ang may liba kitihi. Upang na talaw na kwa, labi pa si ka. Kuwan ngit sa bibiho. Ang iti kaya na pa, kayo ngabi. Ang pa'no kayo na, ka'y usayoh. At the heart of all our blood, our beloved city. Thy mountains, rivers, plains, and seas, thy good waters, and happy. At the heart of all our blood, our beloved city. Dear singing oasis, the love of our forever to you shall be. Look my way to the land of promise, bring me along the far descent. His devotion, and the cross, to serve you forever free. The coming revelation of light, loving ever young and great. I give you the souls and hearts of all, there it is for you and my love. At the heart of all the grace of God, our beloved city. Loving me by the loving pure, my darling, of my soul, Father. At the heart of all the grace of God, our beloved city. To forever give to you, Lord, and my love, my darling.
Please be seated. Madre Secretary, please check whether there is a quorum.
Honorable Joseline B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer. For the First District Councillors: Honorable Agapito E. Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger J. Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Amy Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Honorable George S. Go King on official business, Honorable Jose P. P.S. Abu Junior, Honorable Malvern A. Espasha. For the Second District Councillors: Honorable Ivona Yacene B. Imanu, Honorable Maria Lourdes Iscañi, Honorable Jolynn Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cavandlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suset G. Magtahas Daba. For the Ex-official Members: Honorable Yan Lam is Lim on live, and Honorable John Michael Alcino, City Escape Federation President. Teres Corom, Madam Presiding Officer.
Quorum, the 12th regular session is hereby certified. Before we proceed, Madre General Leader, let us sing a happy birthday to our Mr. Secretary. Sir Torch, no? It's going to be his birthday tomorrow. Let me also greet our visitors who are here, our friends from media, of course, those who are watching now via live, no? So, Carla, can you, can you lead the singing of the birthday song of Sir Torch? Okay. Shall we stand up? Please rise.
Oh my God, Lord. Okay, logi, for first time sir. Oh my God, history, okay. Happy birthday to you. Handa, already sing.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you.
What's that?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday, poor Torch. Yay.
Happy birthday, Sir Torch.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the Honorable Members of the City Council. Thank you very much.
Pilay dadaw nimo. Secret. Anyway, Madre General Leader, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya, please proceed.
Happy birthday, Torch. Kabatsko ni sa sangkunian.
Dagay-dagay na gyan.
Thirty years. Anyway, 29 or tomorrow? Is it?
Tomorrow.
Ah, tomorrow. Delayed is San Miguel. Di San Miguel man.
Ay, uhm po.
September 29 is the fifth day of
San Miguel?
San Miguel. Anyway, that's for the family to decide whether it's coincidental or not.
Yeah.
So, I move, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Joseline B. Rodriguez for the dispensation of the reading of the minutes of meeting on September 19, 2022, considering that all members have been furnished with copies thereof.
Any second? Any objection? I hear none. Motion to see by card.
I likewise move for the approval of the said minutes of meeting.
Any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion to see by card.
We have lone survivor for the special report because Councillor James Judith happily accepted, yielded for this gentleman. But he insisted that we should have a new technology for zero recovery for sanitation, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay.
May we ask the Chair to recognize Councillor Roger Abadai.
Councillor Roger Abadai, you're recognized.
Sanitize up. Follow the protocol. Thank you very much, Madre General Leader, our beloved Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Joseline B. Rodriguez, my colleagues in the 20th City Council, all our friends who are watching us online and here in the gallery. Mayong Hapon ka niyong tanan. Happy birthday for Sir Secretary Torch. Okay, so my report is all about zero waste management to the new, about the new technology. But before that, Madam Chair and my colleagues, as the Chairman of the Environmental Protection Committee, I would like to give a shed light regarding our law, the implementation of solid waste management. It's about almost a decade, 100 karoon ang nasod sa Pilipinas, no? Wapag is kasulbaran. Problema gyan sa garbe. In Metro Manila alone, according to the news, there are about, according to the National Solid Waste Management Division, the country generated about 21 million metric tons of waste, waste, no? Per annum. This is translated to a weight of average waste generated per capita of 0.40 kilogram per day. Now, dinantemato sa obang nasod, ano, obang lugar sa Pilipinas. Dinilanta sa Kagayan di Oro. According to CleanRO, as of, as of this date, no? There are about 1,000 tons of waste per day. So, total of 30,000 tons per month, excluding na pay municipalities sa, sa Missurintalnaga, dam sa atong sanitary landfill karoon. So, problema gyan kayo. Okay, until now, there was no complete compliance of our, of this law. Gikan sa provinces down to the barangay. Nalibog na ang mga tao karoon. Unsa't manon nila hablaon. Kening national law, ordinances, barangay ordinances, so libog na. Now, kita sa Pilipinas, kaproblema ta sa atong basura. Unsa'on ato pag, pag dispose, unsa'on ato pag kening pagkip, no? Unta, nanaman tay sanitary landfill, pero my friends, no? In the City Council, if you try to visit our landfill, landfill today sa paghalungan, landfill region, ah, olay sanitary. Kay ang gitanan collected, kwan, tanan collected nga waste, igor man dito ilubung i tabunan. Moragin, ito tabuna. Anugun kayo, ang ato mga litsis taja, anugun kayo, wala mapay musta, unta, that could generate, that could generate power, and that could generate materials that can be recyclable and could be used sa ciudad. And it will make a city, can generate funds out of our sanitary landfill. Now, nakaproblema ang Pilipinas o kita, pero ang Sweden, ako ipakita karoon, sila gaimport ng basura, problema nila kawanas le basura. Gaimport sila basura, gamay re kening nasod ang Sweden, pero nganong, kinalanlan sila basura. So, I would like to show, please bear me, to show to you slide about Sweden, no? With how do, how did they regard, how did they generate, dispose, ugion sa nila pag threat ang ilang mga basura, o kanay lang ipamalit ng basura, sa tibo kalibutan mo import sila, kainalan sila basura. So, icomplete reversal to our situation. Please, pidi na, mga kwan. Oh, that is in Sweden, no? Totoo namang sihuro mo da sa Sweden, di ba? Okay, so, please have your reflection later, no?
bansa ay problema kung saan nila itatapon ang kanilang gabundok na mga basura. Ngunit sa Sweden, ay kabaliktara naman ang kanilang problema. Nagkukulang sila sa basura. Sa katunayan, nag-iimport o kumukuha pa nga sila ng mga basura galing sa ibang bansa. Mahigit dalawang milyong tunilada ng basura ang tinatanggap ng Sweden mula sa ibang bansa bawat taon. Kahit pa may mga basura na galing sa kanilang mamamayan, kulang na kulang ito. Kaya naman, napipilitan ang Sweden na mag-angkat ng basura galing sa ibang bansa. Ngunit bakit nga ba sila nag-iimport ng basura? Ano ang ginagawa nila dito? Noong taong 2013, naging isyo ang pagtatambak ng Canada ng basura sa Pilipinas.
Canada, Philippines President Rodrigo Duterte has
Unsightly and smelly shipment today. We are talking
Philippines is getting down to work on some trashy business.
Bagay na, ikinagalit ng marami nating kababayan at ng dating pangulong Duterte.
You better pull that thing out, or I will spit sale. Doon sa Canada, ibuhos ko yang basura nila.
Halos gabundok na nga ang ating mga landfills dinagdagan pa ng Canada. Ngunit, mas malala naman sa India, dahil ang landfill nila sa New Delhi ay umabot na sa taas na 213 feet, at tumataas ito ng 32 feet a year. Dahil sa dami ng basura na araw-araw din tinatambak, naiipon ito, at talaga namang umaalingasaw. Sa sobrang dami ng basura, kadalasan ay nagiging problema pa kung saan ito ilalagay. Kung sa ibang bansa, problema ang napakaraming basura, mayroon namang ibang lugar na nag-iimport ito. Tama ang inyong narini. May mga bansang willing tumanggap ng basura mula sa ibang bansa. Kabilang na sa kanila ang Sweden. Ngunit bakit nga ba nag-iimport ng basura ang Sweden? At anong ginagawa nila dito? Upang maintindihan natin ang pag-iimport ng Sweden ng basura, mahalagang alamin muna natin ang regulasyon at batas doon na nakakaapekto sa kanilang pamumuhay. Ang Sweden ay isa sa mga bansang mayroong efficient recycling system. Sa katunayan, mahigit 99.5% ng kanilang mga basura ay nairerecycle. Dahil ito sa mga government programs na nag-uujok sa mga tao at sa mga kompanya na maging responsable sa kanilang waste products. Ngunit bukod sa recycling, ay may mahalaga ring napupuntahan ang mga basura nila. Hindi lingid sa kaalaman ng lahat na napakalamig sa Sweden. Dahil malapit ito sa North Atlantic, halos buong taon ay winter season dito. Dahil sa malamig na klima, tumataas din ang demand para sa kuryente na ginagamit ng mga residente upang painitin ang kanilang mga tahanan. Dito na pumapasok ang kahalagahan ng basura para sa kanila. Maraming power plants sa Sweden ang gumagamit ng basura upang magkaroon ng energy. Matapos sunugin, ang mga basura ay maglalabas ng heat, na siya namang magpa-power sa mga turbines na nagregenerate ng kuryente. Ngunit alam niyo ba, na hindi lamang sa basura kumukuha ng kuryente ang bansang ito? Mayroon din silang iba pang sources ng renewable energy, gaya na lamang ng nuclear at hydro plants. Sa kabila nito, hindi maitatanging malaki pa rin Sa kabila nito, hindi maitatanging malaki pa rin ang kontribusyon ng mga basura. Taon-taon, tinatayang mahigit 10 million na residente sa Sweden ang nakikinabang mula sa kuryente galing sa mga basura. Ngunit saan naman sila nakakakuha ng sapat na basura upang paandarin ang mga power plants? Ang mga European countries, gaya na lamang ng Norway at United Kingdom, ay nag-eexport ng basura sa Sweden. Dahil sa dami ng kanilang mga basura, halos wala na itong mapaglagyan at wala rin silang kapasidad upang i-resycle ito. Kaya naman, binabayaran nila ang Sweden upang ipadala ang kanilang mga basura. Ayon sa mga reports, taon-taon ay mahigit 2.5 million tunilada ng basura ang tinatanggap ng Sweden mula sa ibang bansa. Sa ganitong paraan, hindi na sila gagastos para sa landfill at magkakaroon din ng basura ang Sweden para sa mga power plants nito. Maituturing na win-win nga naman ang sitwasyong ito. Ayon sa abs.net, umita ang Sweden ng 100 million dollars o humigit kumulang 5.5 billion pesos bawat taon mula sa basurang tinatanggap nila galing sa ibang bansa. Doble ang kita ng Sweden. Dahil una, binabayaran sila ng ibang bansa para sa pagtanggap ng kanilang basura at pangalawa, na-coconvert pa nila ang mga basurang ito into electricity na pinakikinabangan ng bansa. Ngayon, ay alam niyo na ang kahalagahan ng basura sa Sweden. Kaya naman, sa susunod na magtatapon ka ng basura, isipin mo muna na maari din palang makatulong ito sa ibang tao. Talaga nga namang kahanga-hanga ang waste system management ng Sweden. Sino nga ba naman ang mag-aakalang may silbi pala ang mga basura? Hindi lang ito basta-basta dapat itapon, kundi dapat ay i-resycle din upang mapakinabangan pa. This is your Ati O from our Republic. Hanggang sa muli and stay awesome.
Okay, thank you very much for bearing with my presentation. Actually, I intended to present that so that you could help me to source out investors who would invest in our city to look like what Sweden has done. Now, dili imposible, I heard, wala pa sa Mindanao, pero I heard in Visayas and Luzon, they do some type of system, technology. So, kung gusto niyo, we will really implement the zero waste management in Kagean dioro. So atong tabangan, we will source out investors in Kagean dioro to make us or to look like what Sweden has presented it in the video. So that is the very essence of bringing that video, Madam Chair and my colleagues, so that we have the idea to improve our system of panatuli koleksyon, taman otas sa koleksyon, taman otas sa landfill, manang dinatong mapay muslan ang mga basura. Kanang dibutang jas sa landfill, para sa gehimo sa Sweden. So, in the end, that this will also potentially enable us, especially our future generation, to have a clean, healthy environment and protection of our nature, Madam Chair and my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Roger Abaday. That was a very good report. So, any comment? Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. For now, Madam Presiding Officer, the law does not allow the burning. Even in our backyard, it's not allowed to burn garbage. And much more, if we allow authority, we provide authority to our own operation at the sanitary landfill. So, perhaps if there are changes under the present setup, we could operate like Sweden. But it's being especially authorized by the national legislation, not by the local legislation, Madam Presiding Officer. So it's a bit concerned that we proceed with inviting investors to undertake similarly as introduced by Counselor Roger Abaday.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya.
But we will refer to the committee.
Yeah, yeah, okay, anyway, yeah, there's nothing impossible naman. Let's just hope, someday, mabot giapon sa ato.
But to me, we'll not invite garbage, Madam Presiding Officer. We already have enough.
Garbage? Anyway, sige lang, let us refer to the committee, no?
On environment of Counselor Abaday.
Okay.
Maybe perhaps to review the national law and maybe we can also recommend appropriate action.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Yes, Counselor Attorney James Judith?
Madam Chair, atong tinahod nga, ah, lang dun nga, B.C. Mayor Jocelyn Bebop Rodriguez, atong tinahod nga mga kauban nga concejal, dinis atong konceo, sa atong mga bisita sa initanan, atong pinanggang katawan si Nagbayan sa Kagean dioro, dili asdang maupay. Maupay, eh, maupay pagabot. Maupay pagabot ni Counselor Pasqual. Diba'to, katong gengon ni, diba'ko pumaniabot si Counselor Pasqual? Diba'to, sa katong gengon ni Counselor Abaday, ako para lang ni note nga, actually nasugdan namang yud ang kaning bahin sa recycling. Kengani, kung nasira ni Counselor Abaday, ni Madam Chair, naata din ni Ganik, meron ang nagsponsor mo siguro ato ang Shell Philippines. Kanabitong, ang sa basura, mahimo siyang meron haloblock or substitute sa haloblock. Ah, yes, ah, saktong si Majority Floor Leader Ian Nakaya, nasa makabalang. Meron ka na, isa lang na, gamay siyang nabuta, pero atis nakasugod ta, nga ang basura day, pwede na to magamit, labi na sa construction industry. Nakana ang buta, nasugdan na na siya, Counselor Abaday. Kulang na siguro katu'ng gengon, saktupod si Counselor Nakaya, katong sunog manggud ang basehan atong sa katong sa Sweden. Pero, maski wala ato, sigun sa katulang sa ato lang initatibo din eh, naanata katong pag sugod nga magamit na to ang basura, mahimong haloblocks. Ganin, nagplano kay kumukuha ato para emo, i-showcase na kubali sa katawan nga. Magamit man day sa, versatile man day na ang kanang blocks. Moro'to, dagang salamat, o asdang Kagean dioro.
Counselor Roger, ni Asdang? Anyway, actually, okay, okay, Counselor Roger Abaday?
I was informed that this technology is already existing in the Philippines. In fact, it is already, the committee has already started so long and in Metro Cebu. They are now adopting this technology. Perhaps we can invite these investors to invest in our city without the expense of the city, at their own expense, in the form of PPP. That will be good, Madam Chair and my colleagues.
Okay, I would like also to share, when I was still a barangay chair, we have this bio reactor. The bio reactor will, we will be getting all the garbage, in fact, sa mercado, among kakuaon. Pero dili moigo, kay gamay ra kayo ang basura. And the bio reactor will help through dry, drying, dili sunog drying, and then convert it to fertilizer. Unfortunately, I was able to produce 200 sacks of fertilizers coming from the basura, but then unfortunately, pagsendong, appeal ang akong pamilya na lunod in town, uban sa bio reactor. So, that bio reactor is from the OST, so the effort of the congressman. So, ako ginunta'tong atabang, but then malagina, pagasendong naanod asa ang tibo pamilya sa makasanding. So, these are the things that we have to consider na posible sa mahitabo na in the near future, our investors or our partners, the OST, they can help us with that also. So, thank you very much. Any more comments? Wala na, can we proceed? Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya?
To be referred to the Environment Committee.
Yes.
We now proceed to the agenda proper, Madam Presiding Officer. The first item is a proposed resolution number 2022-90, confirming an appointment. The appointment of Ms. Ivy Guantero, a City Government Department Head to City Information Officer with all rights and privileges pertinent thereto. Before the proper motion, may we ask the kind indulgence of the Presiding Officer as well as our colleagues in the council that we suspend the rules to allow Ms. Gualberto to participate in the proceeding? I move to suspend the rules, Madam Presiding Officer.
Any second? Any objection? I hear none. Motion is here by Carid.
May we ask Ms. Ivy?
Ms. Ivy Guantero?
Maybe she can introduce herself, her background, and particularly relative to her new post at the city government.
Madam Chair, Honorable Jocelyn Bebop Rodriguez and the honorable members of the City Council of Kagean dioro City, Maayong Hapon. I am Ivy Guantero, born and raised in the city of Golden Friendship. I finished high school from Lurdes College High School, went to college at the University of Santo Tomas and Xavier University, where I earned, where I finished my Bachelor of Science major in Biology. I also earned units in AB English, wherein I learned about journalism, advanced grammar and composition, among others. I have also earned my Master's in Business Administration from the same university. I have been with SM for 19 years, handling marketing and public relations. Public relations is the communication arm of SM Supermalls. And I used to hold the department head position. Thus, the task of the City Information Officer on information dissemination as well as promotion on activities, programs, and projects of the city government are not new to me at all. In fact, I have collaborated with Honorable Bernie Esparsia when he used to work with ABS-CBN. We had promotional projects with Gahit Tabay and I am excited to do another project, which we will be launching very soon. I have also worked with many of you and some of you have been to our mall events, attended our mall events. Thank you, Honorable Suset Magtahas Daba, Honorable Jay Rova Pasqual, Honorable Gurli Balaba, Honorable Ivy Moreno, Honorable Romi Kaliso. Thank you also, Honorable George Go King, Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya, and Honorable Edgar Cabadlas for the many partnerships we had in the past. Thank you, Honorable Dr. Maluga Ani, Honorable Ivy Imano for the warm welcome. And of course, thank you also to Honorable Agasuan, Honorable Roger Abaday, Honorable Jose Pepe Abu Jr., whose I just discovered is a neighbor. Honorable James Judith, Honorable Ian Atsas, and Honorable John Michael Seno.
Yes.
And of course, to our dear Vice Mayor, Honorable Jocelyn Bebop Rodriguez, for being welcoming during the Ella workshops.
Actually, we are shitmates, Ella. But then I'm so sorry, I was not able to, kanila ging wale glasses, no? I was smiling at you, but I didn't recognize you, ako ganda lang glasses.
No worries.
Anyway.
I wish to work with all of you and as I am transitioning to my new role in public service, I, please be assured that I will be doing my utmost best to be of service to you and the people of Kagean dioro. Maayong hapun, ugdagang salamat sa inyong tanan.
Thank you. Welcome and congratulations, Ma'am Ivy.
Her title is Ms., Madam Presiding Officer.
Oh, Ms., yeah, Ms. Ivy. Giklaro gida, Ms. Ivy.
You're not misters, you're a mister.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So if there are no question, Madam Presiding Officer, maybe we can proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
So I move to lift the suspension of the rules.
A session is, rules suspended, rules lifted, session resume.
Okay, move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second, objection? I hear none. Motion is here by Carid.
So, congratulations to Ms. Ivy Guantero.
Guantero.
Guantero, okay. So, may we proceed to item number two and three, Madam Presiding Officer? Thank you. So omnibus motion for items two and three for having the same subject matter. Number two is proposed resolution number 2022-91, returning to the barangay council of barangay number four, its ordinance number 01-2022, series of 2022. And three, proposed resolution number 2022-92, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 15 this city, its ordinance number 02-022, series of 2022, covering the respective supplemental budgets number one, budget number one for calendar year 2022, with estimated incomes with the information that said ordinances are operative in their entirety. We, may we ask the Chair to recognize Counselor Michael Seno?
Counselor Michael Seno, you're recognized?
Good afternoon, Madam Presiding Officer. Considering that it has gone through the approval of the local finance committee, I sumo'p resolution number 2020-2022-91.
And 92?
2022-92, Madam Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Counselor Seno. Any second? Any objection? I hear none. Motion is here by Carid.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second? Objection? Motion is here by Carid.
For number four, we have a proposed resolution number 2022-93, accrediting the First Community Cooperative VICO for purposes of its membership in the local special bodies pursuant to the ILG memorandum circular number 2022-083 and Article 64 Rule 13 of the Rules and Regulations implementing the 1991 Local Government Code or funding its project from the city or other sources as required under the COA circular pertinent thereto. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is here by Carid.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second? Any objection? I hear none. Motion is here by Carid.
Number five is proposed ordinance number 2022-35, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Auey, representing the City Government of Kagean dioro to enter into unsigned the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, with the Department of Social Welfare and Development, DSWD Regional Field Unit Number 10, represented by Regional Director Ramel F. Hamen, covering the implementation of the 12th cycle of the Supplemental Feeding Program under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. May we ask the Chair to recognize Counselor Joylin Mercedes Gurli El Balaba?
Counselor Joylin Mercedes Balaba, you're recognized?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I move for the proposal of ordinance number 2022-35.
Any second? Any objection? I hear none. Motion is here by Carid.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, objection? I hear none. Motion is here by Carid.
Number six is proposed ordinance number 2022-36, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Auey, representing the City Government of Kagean dioro to enter into unsigned the Terms of Partnership with the Department of Health Center for Health Development Northern Mindanao, represented by its Director for Dr. Jose R. Northern Mindanao, represented by its Director for Dr. Jose Aron Leacona Junior, MD, MPH, CSO III, for the implementation of the citywide health programs under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. May we ask the Chair to recognize Counselor Maria Lordesgaani.
Counselor Lordesgaani, you're recognized.
Maayong Hapon, kada tanan. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2022-36.
Any second. Objection? Aheenan, motion is here by carried.
To approve second final reading.
Second. Any objection? Aheenan, motion is here by carried.
Number seven is proposed ordinance number 2022-37, authorizing the city accountant to charge the sum of 8,702 pesos and nineties in tabos from the item non-office social services sector water expenses in the 2022 annual budget cover payment of the unpaid water bill of the Cagayan de Oro City Technical Vocational Institute, CDOC, TVI, with the Cagayan de Oro City Water District, COWD, for the month of October 2022. May we ask the Chair to recognize Counselor Romeo Caliso.
Counselor Romeo Caliso, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Having met all the requirements and everything is in order, move to approve second ordinance, Madam Chair.
Any second. Any objection? Aheenan, motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection? Motion is here by carried.
Number eight is proposed ordinance number 2022-38, appropriating the sum of 120,809 pesos from the item continuing appropriation, calendar year 2029, annual budget, non-office land acquisition expropriation to be made available for the payment of the claim for just compensation of improvements, plants and trees of the here in claimants which were affected by the right of way for road opening from livestock farm two seven located in barangay Balubalde city, and for this purpose, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor to sign the corresponding deeds of absolute sale thereof as listed under claimants one to ten and the appraisal value, Madam Presiding Officer. May we ask the Chair to recognize Counselor Edgar Cabanlas.
Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The proposed ordinance number 2022-38 is proper, having been reviewed by the committee, I move for its approval.
Any second. Objection? Aheenan, motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second. Objection? Aheenan, motion is here by carried.
We have for inclusion, Madam Presiding Officers, Officer, plus as items nine A, B, and ten A and B, as supplied by the City Secretary, and number eleven, move for their inclusion, Madam Presiding Officer.
Any second. Objection? Aheenan, motion is here by carried.
Nine A and B, proposed ordinance number 2022-39, declaring the lands generated by the DPWH construction of the coastal highway from barangay Lapasan to barangay Puerto de City as reclamation area for the city government's proprietary use, and for this purpose prohibiting any person or entity from developing or occupying the same without the city government's permission. And B, proposed resolution number 2022-94, declaring as a matter of policy of the city government of Cagayan de Oro, the reclamation of areas along its coastal areas to usher urban renewal development and metropolization, and signifying its intention to apply with the Philippine Reclamation Authority, PRA, for this purpose. We ask the Chair again to recognize Counselor Edgar Cabanlas for the two items.
Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Majority Leader, but before I move, I would like to say something in explanation of this proposal.
Okay, see Counselor.
Now, I have here the proposed, the copy of the proposed 1,500 hectare Corduva Reclamation Project. We are benchmarking now with our intention to declare and use the lands generated by the construction of our coastal road for government use of the city. Now, let us remember that the city is the owner of all lands within its territorial jurisdiction. So whatever land is added to the city, it becomes a city property, but it requires the approval of the national government. It needs a presidential proclamation. Now, Madam Chair, we are opening the floodgates of socio-economic prosperity in the city of Cagayan de Oro with the creation and establishment of this reclamation project. In our, in our meeting with all the stakeholders, like the Director of the Bureau of the DPWH, Director of the DNR, the DSHUD, and the different departments of our city government, we, we are happy that we initiated this project. Now, it is estimated that we can generate up to 500 to 800 hectares of new land added to the city, and the purpose of this would be housing, commercial, and industrial projects. Now, but as I said, with this, with this proposal now, these ordinances that we are, that will be passing, this will trigger the authority of the city government to conduct a joint survey, to be coordinated with the Office of the DPWH, the DNR, and the City of Cagayan de Oro. We will conduct a joint survey to determine the actual size of this generated, to be generated lands. Now, the, once we have the correct meets and bounds and technical description of this proposed reclamation project, we will then apply for the approval of the Philippine Reclamation Authority. But we need a lot of approval from other agencies, like the NADA, like the DNR, and the Office of the President. The Office of the President will issue the presidential proclamation, declaring the generated land, the reclamation area, to be part and parcel of the City of Cagayan de Oro, and also declaring the same as illinable and disposable land. So, I hope in our term, as now, we can approve this. This will be legacy that you will be living, sharing with our people of Cagayan de Oro. This will change the landscape of our cities. Now, I heard that once we have this reclamation, Cagayan de Oro City Port will become the biggest port of Mindanao. All businessmen, shippers from the Vau will transfer here in Cagayan de Oro. Why? Because it is much easier that goods coming from Manila will be downloaded here in the city, in our, in our port, then transported by land to the Vau, to San Bongra. It's much shorter than the ship going around the港. So, the improvement, and we have the, we have the, we have the proposal, we have studied, we will study the CIBU Reclamation Project, the North and the South, and we will also study the Manila Reclamation Project. And, sigilang karoon, paspasun tanin, then later on, studyan tanin, kaya gan kaya mga, gan ato ato bangun pa, environmental impact and everything. We will be creating the Cagayan de Oro City Reclamation Authority, and this will now connect with the PPA, the Philippine Reclamation Authority, and the all other stakeholders of this project. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I move for the approval of these two proposals.
Thank you very much, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas. Yes, Counselor Ayan Atchas? Oh, no, no. Any second. Any objection? Discussion, objection? Discussion. Counselor Ayan Atchas, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, to our members of this body and to our fellow Cagayanon. I am very happy, Madam Chair, for the proposed ordinance of Consial Edgar Cabanlas. I remember when I was a punong barangay of barangay Puerto, we already made a study about the coastal area of the barangay Puerto. If there will be a coastal road or a bypass road construction in the coastal area, barangay Puerto will generate 10 hectares of vacant lands. That's why I am very happy that this ordinance should be in the hurry, I think Attorney Cabanlas, because one of the proposed plan of barangay Puerto is to create barangay Puerto as the hub of Northern Mindanao, even in Cagayan de Oro, because the 10 hectares of land that we studied, it can generate a port between Puerto to Lete. This is a study of the barangay, as well as this 10 hectares of land, Madam Chair, can generate additional commercial area or commercial growth. Number one, a 10 hectare can be intended for malls, additional malls, or even spaces for parking lots, or even a terminal. So probably a terminal hub is necessary, Madam Chair, because if you can see, there is already congestion in the traffic in Cagayan de Oro. Probably this is a solution if there is another land to be reclaimed by the city. I think it is applicable, Madam Chair, to fast-track this ordinance. I second this ordinance, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ayan Atchas. Yes, Counselor Attorney James Judith?
Madam Chair, inani lang akong nabantayan, point of inquiry lang, Madam Chair. Siguro sa matter of styling lang ni, ako ngitanaw, nakabutang magodinis sa proposed ordinance number 2022-39, declaring the lands generated by the DPWH construction of the coastal highway from barangay Lapasan to barangay Puerto. Akong klaroon, wala mang gutay gahom ang atong dakbayan, gamot declara ng reclamation area, kani kondili, siguro, kikitanaw magun ako sa summary of discussion, wala mang pulminais gutan, labina sa chairman sa pagtukian ni Counselor Cabanlas, wala man minaginon nga, nate power, gamot declare ng reclamation area, kondili, mo identify siguro ang atong dakbayan for endorsement dito sa PRA, nga kani siya para reclamation area. Klaroon ko lang ni, sa styling siguro ni Bostorts, declaring the lands generated by the DPWH construction of the coastal highway from barangay Lapasan to barangay Puerto, kondili, siguro, identifying the lands for endorsement to the PRA or Philippine Reclamation Authority, saka tong, atong ipa, kanang i-reclaim, i-identify na to, wala ta ingon nga, mo declara nga kani sila lands for kanang reclamation. So, naaman ko na daku nga differensya, kuminguntan nga, nate gahom, gamot declara nga kani sila yuta para reclamation, kondili, mo identify, mutumbok lang ang atong dakbayan, nga kani sila nga mga yuta, moni siya atong i-endorse dito sa PRA ng reclamation area, maayong reclamation area nga tugutan bali sa presidente or PRA. Monato, dagang salamat.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Attorney James, yes, Counselor Ayan Mark Nakaya.
The purpose of the Committee on Urban Rural Housing Development, declaring the generated lands and identifying which is already, has already been identified, Madam Presiding Officer, which forms part already in the mainland, because if you will see that there exists a coastal road, but there are two sides of these coastal roads. The interior, which has already been part of the area to be reclaimed, considering that it's not yet totally filled with land, that's the intention. It's not the open ocean, Madam Presiding Officer. The open ocean is for the second item.
So this is only the reclamation area?
Yes.
Okay.
And for whatever purpose, if indeed there is a need for the styling to suit the request of Counselor James Judith, we submit, Counselor Cabanlas, we submit to. At the proper time, when the Presiding Officer signs these documents, if it suits right the proposal of Counselor James, we submit to the styling.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor, thank you, Counselor Ayan Mark Nakaya. Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, you're recognized.
This was the proposal, the recommendation of the DPWH, because once they will receive this, they will know about this, then there will be a realignment and readjustment of the coastal road. Dunay readjustment, ginanginon, kung ati i-declare, nanuman, kay butangan na din nila sa mga preparation for our reclamation project. Now, nanong ginan, anatun, apusutik, parang away musulud, tilikado kayo, unang nita parun sa ibang lugar, tumintas tanto, wakwamahuman ang coastal road, o, ato napugan ang mga tao, para di ta maglisun kunya pagpapahawak, diba? Sumuna nga, atong tuyo nga, mapreserv na to, mapreserv na to, ang area. We are prohibiting people from going into, rushing into this vacant property. Positioning na rin, nawanan, maglisun na rin ta.
Okay.
Importante, gigayo.
Thank you, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, yes, Counselor Attorney James Judith?
Wala, wala ako nag, madam Chair, ang ako nagkiklaro, so kung katunggi ingon ni Counselor Cabanlas nga prohibiting any person or entity from developing or occupying the same without the city government's permission, maghimutan na, lay siya nga, ordinancea. Ang kani ako pasubot sa declaring the lands, wala lagi ta power, kondi ang styling siguro nga i-endorse na to, ang atong mga yuta nga ma-identify na to nga para sa endorsement dito sa PRA. So siguro, katupita ako ginon, sakto, Majority Leader Ayan Nakaya, styling, pero kung naaman to, katung pinaka-intention, gud na to, pinaka-tumong, gud bali, matupasa, gibungat na ni Counselor Cabanlas, katung i-declara, quote-unquote, katung para di sila makasulud, wala may problemaan na, pero on a separate nga, ordinance, or siguro section, pero ako lang, isklaroon lang na to, para, para, mabagay siya, bahaunta sa legal nga punto, punto legal nga, dili lagi tamakadiklara, kondili, mutumbok ta sa, katung. Styling naman siguro, Bostorts, magkiklaro lang ako, Majority Leader, styling lang, wala, ako nagkiklaro lang ako ba, dili si ingon nga, opposition, something.
Whatever that suits the...
The Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, yeah? So, okay, rah? So there will be changes lang sa styling lang, sa wording, okay? So Counselor Gurli Balaba? Joylin Balaba?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maayong Hapon sa tanan, ako lang observation, okay? As Counselor Cabanlas is the chairperson of the Committee on Urban Poor, Urban Rural Poor and Housing Development, and Counselor James Judith is the vice chair. Sila palang duha, wala na, sila nagkasinabot, pwede ba na tunis siya, ibalik na lang sa committee, tapos magdito sila maglantugig, kunsa bagay yun ang...
Actually, actually, Counselor Balaba, thank you, ah? Wala sila naglalis, no? There will be only, andito, sa styling lang, gamay lang kayo nga, gamay lang kayo nga giusap na wording na siguro, Counselor Ayan Mark Nakaya, ay mo pag-away, ha? Okay, styling lang, so is that okay with you, Counselor Gurli? Is it okay with you? Styling lang, gamay lang.
Observation, observation lang to, Counselor Gurli.
Lagi-lagi. So Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, okay, rah? Gamay lang ang styling, nalay changes gamay, okay, rah? Okay.
Whatever suits the...
You do not quarrel. No, you're friends, I know. Whatever suits, yeah, okay, so gamay lang, changes.
Observation to ni Counselor Gurli, that should not be set aside.
Yes.
Counselor Judith being the vice chair, Counselor...
Actually, usahay because of the, you know, styling the wordings, no? But then, negligible na kayo, but we cannot be postponing this. But we cannot be postponing this, ano? This is very important, so this should, we should proceed on this.
Gapaninuhod, si Gerli.
You did not.
The motion, Madam Presiding Officer, is for the approval.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Approval na pa, so that this can be, ano na?
Yes.
Okay. So, oh, listen, listen, we are approving already. So are we okay? Approval, so any second? Second. An objection? Objection? Aye, na motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading of items 9A and B.
Second. An objection? Aye, na motion is here by carried.
Reminder, as you know, Counselor Gerli, uh, tuang chair, vice chairman, mo agree sa chairman, labina ko na.
Yes, yes, yes.
For items 10A and B, Madam Presiding Officer, may I proceed?
Okay, please proceed.
Namay conference room available.
Okay, okay.
Anyway, agtumpang, James, babae na, James. Now, 10A is proposed resolution number 2022-95, approving the Supplemental Annual Investment Program, SAIP Number 2, for calendar year 2022 of the City Government of Cagayan de Oro. And B, proposed ordinance number 2022-40, approving the Supplemental Budget Number 2 of the General Fund and Supplemental Budget Number 2 of the Special Account Local Economic Enterprises Utilities, both for calendar year 2022 with an estimated incomes of 55,858,038 pesos and 80,800 pesos, respectively, against estimated expenditures of the same amounts. Move for the approval of items 10A and B, Madam Presiding Officer.
Any second. An objection? Aye, na motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second. An objection? Okay, aye, na motion is here by carried.
Uh, for item number 11, that's the proposal of our minority floor leader. 11 is proposed resolution number 2022-96, commending the Roads and Traffic Administration, RTA, for initiating the Coastal Highway Operation Mobile Patrol, CHOMP, thereby facilitating the smooth flow of traffic at the city's coastal highway. May we ask the chair to recognize Counselor James Judith II.
Counselor Attorney James Judith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move, Madam Chair, for the approval of proposed resolution numbers 2022-96, commending the RTA, Madam Chair, for the initiation or the, uh, activation of what you call this, this chump or City Highway Obstruction Mobile Patrol.
Any second. An objection? Aye, na motion is here by carried.